This conference will now be recorded.
So it's 7:02, we're going to get started. So welcome back, everyone. This is our first meeting back after four months. Oh, my gosh, I looked back. It's actually been a full four months since we met. And I've missed you. So I'm excited. We have a new member. Paul Ingles is joining us, which is very exciting. He's been involved in many different city companies in the past and is in a really great position to be able to jump right in. So, you know, Paul, just so you know, you are a full member now. I know when I started, I was a little hesitant to participate.
I am hesitant to participate.
Bernie mixing up margaritas?
Well, I really appreciate the appointment. It's great. It's great to be here working on things again.
Good, welcome. So the City Council and the DRB have been meeting for a while now, and I got a few tips about some of the things that they have been doing. I guess it's been really helpful for their chairs and audience members if, in general, the commissioners would keep your video on so that people can kind of see all of us, which we're doing now. And then, in general, if kind of the general audience members would generally keep their video off unless they're trying to be recognized or they're, you know, getting in line to speak, it just might make it easier. So if I see a video pop on and somebody waving, you know, it's really clear that somebody wants to speak up. As we all know, there's a lot of issues with background noise. So if you have something going on, you know, keep things muted. Whenever I kind of ask if anyone has something to say, I can kind of give a few extra seconds for people to turn their mics back on. And then, in general, I'm going to try to do a better job of making it clear kind of when we're asking for input. So, you know, on a lot of things, we'll maybe have a commissioner discussion first. I'll ask if commissioners have input and then make sure to have time for audience members to also speak up as well. So if you are trying to speak up, you can, like I said, turn your video back on and wave. You can type something into the chat box, which is always available. And if you're someone who's just calling in, you know, you can just speak up because you don't have the other options there. So I guess before we get started, I just wanted to say that we're kind of coming back to our work in what feels like a really new world. There's been a lot going on in the last four months, both with the pandemic as well as some really kind of increased attention to a lot of different issues that we can reflect on with the Black Lives Matter movement. And, you know, it might feel strange to just kind of jump right back into where we had been on the items we had been working on. So, you know, I think it would make sense for us at some point to be able to really think about those new things that have been going on in the world and how we might want to, in the short or long term, address different things. So we could potentially start a discussion of that a little bit under scheduling or, you know, Paul had some ideas. I guess there's been some discussion with the city manager's office about, you know, maybe even having a group of citizens think about kind of changes that have been happening rapidly in our community. So I think that was about it. And I guess just to go right into the actual agenda items, does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Monica, you're on mute, so.
There we go. There we go. I just was going to say, I know that the March 10 meeting minutes are at the bottom of the agenda, but I did find them very helpful to review again because it brought forth some points for what we're going to talk about tonight. So I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at them in depth, but it really did summarize our last conversation. And I don't know if it's worth maybe just spending a minute letting, making sure everyone's had a chance to really look at those, or it's up to you. It's kind of, is it a change of agenda or just if I'm making that comment? So whatever you want to do with it.
I guess if anyone hasn't revisited those, it'll be good to take a look ahead. Maybe people can just do that on their own while we're doing the next couple of things. So maybe are there open to the public for items not related to the agenda? Does anyone have anything they wanted to bring up, not agenda-related? Okay, not seeing any. I also don't see anything in the chat box. Paul, did you have anything from the staff perspective to report on?
Well, I guess I could say that there's a lot to report on, but I think that maybe I'll save it for a report for your next meeting so that we don't sort of go on and on. I guess the one thing I would announce, and I know that commissioners know, but just for members of the public, that Kathy Anne made the tough decision to move on a couple of weeks ago from the department. We're going to miss her a lot. She had to make a tough choice in these times and felt that she needed to be able to spend more time with her family than she was able to. And so she made that decision, and we wish her all the best and are really thankful for her 15 years of work with us. And I know she's going to miss all of you too, so.
Great. Yeah, we miss her already.
That could be a loss to your power base, Paul. But yeah, we really appreciate Kathy's contributions.
I was wondering, is your staff going to be added to, Paul, or do you guys just have to make up that work among?
It's the, it is our intention to fill the position, yes. Yeah.
But yeah, she did an awful lot of work. So I guess we can move into the annual appointments and meeting times.
All right. So this is the one part of the year when I take the reins for just a minute here. As you know, you appoint or you elect a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk. You can do it all at once or individually. As I said in the staff memo, I'll take a nomination and a second if the person who is being nominated will accept, then I'll ask that. And then, if there's any other nominations, I'll give a minute for any commissioner to make any other nominations, and then I'll call a vote. Ted?
I'd like to, please.
I can make.
Sorry.
I hit Ted.
Am I on?
Go ahead, Ted.
Okay. I'd like to put a nomination to slate Jessica Lucio as chair and Bernie Gagnon as vice chair and Monica Dossby as clerk for their re-nomination of previous services.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All right, Michael, with the three of you accept, if so appointed, you can just give me a thumbs up.
Yep.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Going once, going twice? All right, I will call the vote then. All those in favor of Jessica as chair, Bernie as vice chair, and Monica as clerk for another year, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any nays?
Paul, am I taking notes tonight, or?
We've got it recorded, so Sue will see the video. Yeah. Any nays? All right, that is seven zero in favor. So thanks, everybody. And I'm going to hand it back to Jessica.
Okay, so the next piece is to set our typical or regular meeting dates and times. As Paul has in the memo, we have in the past had the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month at 7:00 PM, except the December meeting there at the holidays located, well, I guess, do we need to say a location? Because now we're doing video.
No, you don't need to say a location, just a time and a date.
I believe that we maintain the same schedule of the second and fourth Tuesdays at 7:00. Location to be announced for each meeting in advance of the meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
Aye.
No opposition in the hearing, so we will keep our regular meeting dates. So next thing on our agenda is the review and discuss of the draft environmental protection standards. These were put out in May by staff who worked with me to try to summarize and incorporate a lot of the different things that we had been talking about in February and March before we stopped meeting. You know, it felt important to me to try to get the things that we had already talked about in there, so we at least had something for all of us to react to. So I do want to point out like that this is the first time that, you know, our group is meeting to see these since a few different pieces were put in. Some of the Chapter 12 items are as we saw them the last time, but kind of the bigger pieces that got added were the habitat blocks and habitat block connectors. So Bernie and I and staff and the City Council Chair and Vice Chair did a little video call to talk about kind of how it might be helpful for them and us to kind of coordinate on these. One of the things that we talked about, and Monica, this is in the meeting minutes from our last meeting, was that we felt like when we had met with the City Council jointly, we were hoping for a little more kind of feedback or direction from them, but they felt like they needed to wait to get some of the other reports that they had commissioned done so they could look at it all together. So they have gotten all of that information they were waiting for. And this little, the Chair-Vice Chair meeting came up with the idea that, you know, it did make sense for us as the commission to like look at this Chapter 12 draft and do like a kind of high-level overview and make sure that it was kind of in line with generally what we're thinking and maybe not dive into the nitty-gritty and a lot of extensive public input. I know we talked about doing a lot of different sessions and really getting like a larger amount of feedback, you know, just to at least see if it's in the direction that makes sense for council before we kind of spend a whole lot more time digging into a lot of the details. So the idea would be to kind of at this point, this meeting and another meeting, if it makes sense for us to do that or another work session, kind of look at the high level, then have a meeting with the City Council to kind of show them where we're at with things and get feedback. And then, and then do kind of a deeper dive into details and are there changes that we want to make or maybe adjustments to exact spots that are now in habitat blocks and that kind of thing. So that kind of progression to move this part forward. So I guess that was a little overview of how we got here and maybe how we could kind of move forward with these changes. And then, I guess, the other piece of this that I wanted to point out is that at our next meeting or very soon, we'll have the planned unit development piece that goes along with this that really focuses on the development part, you know, versus the environmental protection part. So.
Jessica, how do you want to take or deal with inputs from us, from the commissioners, you know, comments that we might have on this draft? Is there a way in which we can have a version on which we can comment, where we can add comments? I know you can add a little text boxes, but not the kind of comments that staff is able to add. That might be helpful.
Yeah.
And save a lot of.
Yeah. So, Michael, are you talking about some kind of really specific detail pieces and like wording or maybe markup on a map? Or are you talking about?
Yeah, well.
Approach?
The document is fairly dense, so I've only read, I'm only done in the last, you know, since prior to this meeting, done, been through about 10 pages of the draft. And I've made scribbled notes on it, which doesn't help you guys, but, you know, it might be useful if all of us were able to make comments so that the next time we get to review it, we've got something, some meat to talk about. An example is just at the very beginning, the numbers, you know, 1201, 1202, and so on are out of sequence with what's in the body of the document. And that's just something I noticed at the beginning. But then I have a lot of other, you know, notes and comments and questions, which is understandable since it's a fairly comprehensive document.
Monica, did you?
You're muted.
Sorry. Yeah. Sorry. I just was going to ask going along with that, can you just clarify, how do we have a high-level conversation? I sent some example questions to Paul before this meeting because are those detailed questions or are those high-level? Can you give an example of what you hope we discuss today versus getting into the weeds, which is what we're probably going to find ourselves doing? What kind of comments today are helpful?
Yeah. So, for example, one of yours was, one of the ones that you had sent, I think, is more in the weeds. And I think it's a great comment. It's about maybe using some of the required landscaping budget to help fund like pieces of the connector or, you know, additional landscaping in, not landscaping, but like reforestation in areas. So that feels like maybe a little bit more specific rather than a question like, should habitat blocks be protected? Or, you know, I guess that.
Here's the big question then. When I go through the document, to me, there's a lack of clarity on what a forest core is. And I think that there was some very valuable learning and very specific definitions that Arrowood gave that could help us look at, are they Level 1, are they Level 2? How do we look at that? And I just feel these are lacking some of the definition that Arrowood provided. So that's, that's a big comment. And I can leave it there or give some examples, but.
Yeah. Maybe Duncan, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, I was just going to kind of, that was, Monica, kind of along with what I was thinking. In reading the document, when I got to the habitat block section, that felt somewhat incomplete to me, especially in terms of how they were defined and how they were mapped. It referred back to a map, and I'm not sure if that was that Arrowood had done. And I know there was a lot of, you know, controversy about how that map was done and was it actually accurate? But I felt like that piece with the habitat blocks definitely needed some work. That seemed kind of like, I know Paul had mentioned that it was in there kind of as a first put in there, but I felt like that, that needs some clarity. I guess if that's from a high level, certainly there's things to go into the details of it. But I felt like that mapping of them and the delineation of them needed a little more structure to it.
Yeah. You know, and I think that it refers back to a map that does include all of the Arrowood, all of the ones still in Arrowood at this point was what it was generally saying, you know. But if we feel like that's not the way we should go forward, then that's a discussion point. Paul?
Well, I think that's, you know, I guess two comments. One sort of big picture, I think that what would be really helpful as soon as the commission is comfortable is to know, you know, what is the universe of the natural resources that you would like to have covered in this chapter? So this is, there's a draft out there. If you feel that that's too much, too little, that would be really helpful. If you want to go into habitat blocks and habitat block connectors, because they're the most significant addition, although also steep slopes, we can certainly go. And a question like what Duncan raised, I think, is appropriate. Just to briefly note, the draft as written, and again, it was just to put something out there, represented what the commission had last talked about. So that was the Arrowood, to its full extent, less the area in the Form Base Code. So that's in your packet, there's, it's called Map 1. It says Habitat Blocks and Connectors. So it's all of the Arrowood, less the Form Base Code area. And then there's a handful of connectors that staff put together that was based on the Arrowood work and then refined, working with Jens Hilke from the state to help identify some key connectors that are not coexisting with streams and wetlands, which was some of what the commission had talked about at the end of February. So that's kind of where we're at now. At the end of that meeting in March, you had, the next level of discussion was going to be where, you know, are there other policy considerations that you want to take in? So I don't know if you want to start talking a little bit about habitat blocks now, Jessica, if you'd like me to give a little mapping overview of sort of where we're at currently and where the draft regulations are now. I can spend five minutes just going through a quick sequence of maps for you if you'd like to, or not.
I think that might be helpful, but I think, you know, I just want to reiterate, the other question Paul said, like if someone feels like there's some other natural resource that's missing from the list, that's something that we want to kind of bring up and, you know, make sure that we don't hear that like next month or two months from now. But does any commissioners have a, yeah, Monica?
I mean, I guess just as a reminder for all of us, a refresh, we spent an incredible amount of time and great detail going through everything but these two new 12.05 and 12.07 as they're being called in this. We, that's how I'm recollecting it. And we never had a public comment period on it, per se, but we did spend an incredible amount of time outside of those. So when I was looking through it again, it was specifically those two that were the areas that would seem that more focused discussion is needed before going on to the City Council, if that helps. But to me, it felt very thorough, except for the details of those two areas.
It sounds like, Paul, yes, I think the map overview could be really helpful. You know, that's, that's really the new piece.
Okay. So let me take just a couple of minutes and do that. I'm going to do a quick screen share, and I promise I won't take very much of everybody's time here.
While Paul's doing that, if we throw out some questions that you guys would rather, that you deem are too detailed, right? Is that how we should do this? Like, if we have a question, we throw it out. If it's too detailed, we say parking lot. Is that fair? Yeah?
Yes, I'd say if you want to discuss it tonight to raise it. Otherwise, if commissioners or members of the public would like to share some more detailed things for, send it to me in an email, and I can compile it, and we can talk about it when we get to a little more detailed discussion.
Okay.
All right. So just quickly here, I hope everybody's seeing the screen here. This is obviously a map of South Burlington. What you see here in gray are parcels that are either less than four acres in size or are considered built upon. That means 10% impervious or greater. This was the starting map for the Open Space Interzoning Committee. The yellow pieces that you see in there are properties in various stages of development review. So just as context in there for you. This here is a map of our current regulations. So this is basically all the, all the natural resources that we currently regulate, including floodplains, wetlands, streams, river corridors, parks, and of course, the Natural Resource Protection District, which is the part in green, which is, does allow for limited development. But in terms of sort of big picture, we put that as a conservation area. This here, just appearing on the screen, are the areas that would be covered under the draft regulation. There's one tiny little error here, which is that I didn't cut out the portion of the forest block that is within the Form Base Code area. But the purple color here represents the forest blocks. In many cases in the southeast quadrant, those are the same areas as the, as the Natural Resource Protection District, but not entirely. And there's overlap, not surprisingly, with other areas that are wet and/or, and/or other natural resources. There's a very light pink color in there that you can see if you look closely. Those are the steep slopes over 25%. Those are the ones that would only, in very rare circumstances, allow for infrastructure encroachment. Actually, it might be 20%. I have to go back and look at which data I put in. This is a map showing the proposed regulations plus any land that is conserved in some manner, either by an association or the city has purchased or Waukesha Valley Parks District owns. So that's the light green showing there. And then this is a map showing all of that same information altogether. It takes a minute to load. But this shows all of the quote-unquote "built" areas, which of course could have redevelopment, as we've seen in many cases along Shelburne Road and Williston Road in the city center area. But this sort of represents the culmination of all those things with the white areas essentially being the areas for which, where development would be permitted that are essentially green-filled areas. So those, that's the remaining element for discussion. And then just lastly, although this isn't the subject of tonight's conversation, but just as a frame of reference, these blue outlines with the numbers in it are the parcels that the Open Space Interzoning Committee flagged for priority of conservation. So I just wanted to give, give that as a quick overview. I'm happy at any point to zoom in. This is a dynamic map, so I can actually zoom in on any place if commissioners want to speak about that. But I just wanted to give that as sort of a broad brush for everyone.
Any thoughts from commissioners or feedback?
Lots of thoughts and lots of things to talk about. I'm looking, I guess, for a direction on what I should talk about tonight and what we weighed on. Like, at some point, it'd be very good to take that map and look strictly at the habitat blocks only, with all the other stuff removed. I'm going to give you an example, and this is going to be detailed. But there's one part on the map I looked at. You have a flag for the 100 feet within. It's very detailed, right? I looked at that map. And when you get into the detail of it, and I think it'll make a difference to property owners, there are some portions of it where there's like these fingers. You know, you have your core, and then you have these fingers. And then, and we were getting to the point in March, which is so frustrating, of having the conversation of, well, do those fingers on the map, how significant are they to the habitat that's trying to be protected? how significant are they to the habitat that's trying to be protected? Because they are significant to the landowner. So at what point can we get back? At what point do we get to the detail of that map to look at some of that? Because I do think that that's important before going to the city council to at least see where we all stand on some of those issues. Because we may all agree and then that's a simple, or we don't. And then that shows there's going to be more conversation. That's just one example. I guess I'm still looking for a direction about.
I, I guess I would say, Monica, this is that time to talk about that level of things that this, in my view, that would be appropriate. You know, I think what Arrowood put out was the best available review of habitat blocks. How that becomes policy is a municipal decision. So whether you, how you translate their study into your work is, that's, that's really sort of where you all come in to identifying where are the trade-offs? What's the right thing to do for our community? As an example, in March, you had decided to remove the form-based code and you had decided that if a property is less than one acre in size in those residential areas where there's a pre-existing home, that it's, it's not a priority to, you know, have somebody's one tree in their backyard be part of an overlay district. So I think you're at the policy level discussion now of, of what's, what, what do you want to be addressing and where the science comes back in? We're happy to share that back. I know that, for instance, Arrowood did identify core areas and outer areas. They also identified sort of a minimum total area that they felt was valuable for any habitat block to be functional. So in some cases, 100 meters or 300 feet in remains much larger than 20 acres. And in some cases, that drops it below what they felt would be functional. So yeah, I, I think it's good to have the, the, the overall discussion now. And whenever you get to the, the sort of broad consensus on the big picture, then if commissioners want to look more closely at individual ones, then that's absolutely in your purview. I would just sort of counterbalance that with, I know that you all and the community is very anxious to also do it right, but, but do it, but be complete with the project.
So Monica, were you, I guess a question for you is about the core. So right now, the way this is worded is that the entire habitat block is protected as the level one. But then if someone, for some reason, was going to be kind of encroaching inside of it, either to, you know, for the different reasons in here, it would not be allowed to, under kind of any circumstance, encroach into the core part? Like the only encroachment would be in the, the outer 100 meters? Like, were you suggesting something different? Like maybe the habitat block was only the core or?
Well, so, and I just actually found that definition in the, in the minutes when I looked at it. But Arrowood talked about in Paul, it's that 20 acres or that the minimum of a 10-acre core, if there is 10 acres within, is extremely environmentally important and delicate. And so there's a certain number of, amount of acreage where it sounded like that was a viable core. And to me, that should become a hazard. I mean, that, that particular core should be a hazard. And generally, they're already going to be over what we consider a hazard anyway. But it just seems like that, those precise cores that they picked out seem to be something that we should map very specifically. This is Core A and it's here and it's 20 acres and no encroachment on those, on that 20-acre core should ever happen. But then there's going to be habitat, forested habitat beyond that core. And then it becomes, is that level one? Does some of it become level two? But, but at least making sure that that core habitat of the 10-plus acres or whatever it was is, is untouched and not approached, encroached upon. And then a separate conversation about connectors. So that, that wasn't clear to me in this. By just blanketing the entire habitat, it, in some ways protects, maybe, I don't want to say too much because, but it protects a lot. But does it really protect and, and, and flag the importance of a core that may exist there? It just, it feels like that should be specifically mapped.
So as drafted, Monica, it, basically, the default is that the entire habitat block would not be touched, except where the commission decides as policy that it wouldn't. There are a few circumstances where somebody can choose to do a habitat assessment if they, if they so choose. And in doing so, they could move certain things around, but they'd never be able to get into the core area. That's, that's how it's drafted. Whether that's the right line, I think that's, I, I think that that's for you to discuss, but that's, that's the draft there. And just to back up, I think I put this in my main memo. But the reason that we drafted it that way was some communities require there be a habitat assessment every single time before there goes, there goes to be an application in front of the DRB. And I think that we've all learned that that is a recipe for endless litigation on both parts. And so what we, what this draft tries to do is draw a line and then give the applicant the choice if they want to look at moving it, then they can. And that's subject to all the appeals that, that might be there. But it, it gives them a known quantity if they choose to.
Well, I guess to that, what I'm saying is by not indicating what the absolute 10-acre, whatever that number is, core of these key places, without actually mapping those and just lumping them in, then in the future, any assessment may disagree with that. And so to me, it, it seems like it's, it, it's inviting too much constant evaluation and adds to both the development and the confusion within the community. I think the community would benefit from seeing, you know, where and what is absolutely paramount. And then understanding that areas outside of that core, there can be some flexibility and the important environmental impact is still minimized. It's so, so yeah, I, I guess that I don't, I don't agree with the full, just full blanket statement. And I'd rather see hot points in the core with strong lines that say hazard. And then in exchange for that, a willingness to understand what areas may not be as critical, if I can say it that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or?
Has everybody received Tom Bailey's comments? Had a chance to read them? Tom worked with me a lot on the Form-Based Code Committee and he is a retired attorney who, I mean, you may know his background, but he's written land development regulations in Vermont for decades. And I don't think anyone understands these things as well as Tom. And his recommendation is throw the draft out and start over again.
Well, my response to that is that we do have, as Paul just said, we do have within this very clearly adding that anytime there is, a, a landowner has a question about those regulations, they have that, that evaluation process, which is, opens up that door for those kind of, that, that's how I understood, that's what I understand that, that, that process to be. And I don't know, Paul, if you can speak to that, but I kind of see that, that option as the time for each landowner to be able to have that conversation.
I think it does afford that. I would say that, and I'm not sure if Tom Bailey's on here, but I think Tom, along the lines of in developing the balance overall of, of what should be natural resources protected versus our other city goals of affordable housing that doesn't, feels like it should be looked at together holistically. I think that that's just, is what I'm just going to point out.
Now, maybe ask everybody who's not speaking to mute?
This is all new to me today, so I really can't comment further on it. I just have a lot of respect for Tom Bailey.
Duncan raised his hand.
Duncan, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I read the report that Tom and the group put together and it was very interesting. You know, and just in the maps that Paul just showed us, looking at that last map with all of the different layers on it, it, it kind of brings to a forefront how little land is available for housing. And I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be conserving land, but I think that Tom's report does have a very valid point in that one of the, one of the goals of our plan is to be an affordable city for everybody. And, you know, we're taking a ton of land out of development. And I'm not saying we need to develop all that land, but I think, it was interesting, Jessica, when you mentioned first the PUD project that's coming up, it's kind of the development side. It's almost like that's the other side. I'd like to see that as well as this and see how they complement each other. I feel like we're kind of, we're presenting one side without presenting the other side. And I don't think the public has seen or understands the PUD some stuff as much. And that may be an element that may calm some fears on that side. But I, I definitely think that that report was, had some very valid points. And I, I don't know how we incorporate that into Article 12 or where we look at that, but there's some very valid points in that, that report. And I think, again, looking at that map that Paul had with all the layers on it, there's not a lot of land available for development at all.
No, and I, I agree Duncan. So if anyone didn't get a chance to read that report, it has been emailed to all of us. So definitely take a look. It's a really, really well put together. Monica, do you?
I just was going to ask, do we have, the reality is of the things that we're talking about adding with these new regulations, they already overlay lands that are already protected. There's not, I'm wondering, do we have a sense, Paul, of like how many acres of land have been added to the map beyond what's already, what, what already has some protections on it? That would be helpful to understand.
We can get that, Monica. I might have it. I, I remember posing a question similar to that to our mapping folks back in February. I'll see if I can find it now. If not, I can get it for you. It's, it's, it's significant, obviously, to every property owner, but I think your, your overall statement is that a, a, a large amount of the forest blocks are also co-existent with areas that are, in one way or another, already protected. But I don't want to diminish that for individual property owners or in certain key properties that that might be significant.
Right. And it, and that, that not everything that's mapped is treated equally because the level twos still have a lot of usable land opportunities. So it's sometimes I do think that the map, as you look at it without understanding, that can have a different impact, you know, different impression than, like if you only, if you remove level twos, for example, from the map, when you look at a layer of that, you're really looking at everything that's already, already protected as a primary. So it really is getting into the nitty-gritty of the level twos. And maybe some of the habitat block can actually be level two. And I guess that's what I would find to be a very interesting conversation and could get to some of what the perception out there is that everything is hazard and that's not what we're saying.
Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, what Duncan may have been referring to is open, there's not much open land to build on or to, to, for housing, but there's a, a lot of, at least potentially, a lot of, of available space for redevelopment elsewhere. Not, not open space necessarily, open land necessarily, but in other parts of the city where density is low and, and could be much higher. So I agree, there's not much open space left, open land, but there is potential for housing development elsewhere.
Monica, to answer your question from a few minutes ago, there's approximately 2,000 acres of land that are in the habitat blocks. Of that, about 1,300 acres is either Natural Resource Protection District or a hazard area. So it's about 700 additional acres, which is not insignificant, but it's about a third of the total forest blocks.
And those are a combination of level one and level two, that 700 balance?
Level ones presently are just the forest blocks. So it's, it's level two or not, or, or no restrictions is the 700 balance.
The 700 balance is level two, is what you're saying?
No, I'm saying 700 balance is either unrestricted or level two potentially. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The 700 balance is, is, is otherwise unrestricted. Like, or a level two. Had it not been for that forest block, it would not have any other restrictions on it or it's a level two. That's what I meant to say. There's no, there's no additional restrictions on, on that 700 acres. It's not a wetland, it's not a natural resource protection district.
So that's the 700, I think, is going to be really helpful for us to, to look at and find like what, and from my perspective is, well, what of that 700 is a very valuable 10-plus acre forested core? And then what is beyond that, that where there might be some flexibility while still protecting the core and protecting connectivity from core to core? But looking at areas within that 700 that are periphery, you know, again, maybe those, like those fingers that are sticking out, that are running into highways, you know, what, where is there some, you know, where, how can we discuss those 700 acres? That, that seemed very valuable to me, whether it's tonight or another night. That seems like a very productive conversation.
Monica, it almost sounds like you're getting at the idea that maybe, you know, the, the original idea like way back last year was that there might be two levels of forest protection, like a level one and a level two. And it's, it's almost sounding like you're getting back to that idea that maybe the core would be the level one and the periphery areas you're talking about would maybe be that level two that, you know, would still have some protections, but not as definitely.
Yeah, we went through a whole conversation about the, you know, extremely restrictive. And then it, it's not that it can be cleared, but responsible level two treatment of, of that periphery. But then also important is just the connectivity from core to core. Not that that is also a hazard, but just knowing at least where those are, keeping the map, because now we do know, we've, well, we, we have good leads on that. So yes, so it's core and the connectivity from core to core as a, as a more important feature to protect with some periphery, maybe having some flexibility. And I think that could help the, the landowners, but also assure the community that what's most important is being preserved.
Well, it sounds like that's something that we'll have to maybe have a map of for our next discussion. Duncan, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just about to ask, do we have a map that shows?
Yeah, I was just about to ask, do we have a map that shows in the forest blocks that core versus the periphery? Did anyone would do that or did we? I don't.
Uh, yes, Duncan, we have a map of that. That's pretty easy to pull up. We could pull it up now if you wanted. It sounds like what Monica is inquiring about is to highlight basically those areas that the forest blocks would be adding restrictions that don't currently exist. And then of that, which of it is core habitat and which is not. So we can, uh, I could probably jerry rig that, but it might be better to get more, um, you know, easier to understand maps if that's what commissioners want. I want to make sure that, um, I'm happy to do any work that folks want. I also want to make sure that I'm not going down one path and another path. So getting some concurrence of what you're all looking for would be really helpful. And then if you wanted to have a work session to look site by site at both these natural resource considerations and where you might want to prioritize the natural resources in terms of connectivity or core or whatever it is, and then where you might want to prioritize other things for whatever reason, then you could, we can do that. We're happy to do as you wish to make sure that this is the policy you want.
I mean, if, if, and you know, we just heard from Monica, it sounded like Duncan was interested as well. But I mean, if the other commissioners just kind of like it as written, keeping the entire habitat block kind of considered as a whole, I guess, speak up. Okay. Well, it sounds like I'm not hearing any objection to having kind of that detail. Michael, go ahead.
Could you repeat that?
Well, Paul, you know, Monica brought up the, the idea of possibly treating the core of the habitat possibly differently than the periphery. So I mean, Paul just wanted to make sure that was something that we all wanted to see before he went behind the scenes and did all that mapping. So I just wanted to kind of see if that would be helpful before we have him do that. Okay, I'm seeing nods. So it does seem like that would be helpful.
Okay, we can turn that around pretty quickly.
Okay. Any other commissioners, they have something they want to bring up right away? I do want to make sure we have some time for some audience input as well.
I know I'm being a mic hog, but I did have another question. I do my homework. Paul, in your, um, in your memo to us, so it's not within this, there was just something that you wrote and I didn't know what it meant. Um, and it had to do with, ah, it said under notes, update, update notes on the May 2020 draft. Number, under number one, possible, uh, consider possible simplification of classification of hazards, level one, level two resources. The main purpose of the classification here is to designate how these resources will be treated in subdivision. So I know this is for the subdivision, but the, the last sentence, I didn't understand what you meant. Cause you said the classifications do not change the standards for protection slash impact themselves. How can that, that's the whole point of them, isn't it?
Well, so, um, the, the way that we're trying to put this together is that Article 12, the section that you're looking at here states when you can and cannot, um, where you can and cannot build. Where are the resources that you allow for development? Where are the ones that you don't? The, um, PUDs and the subdivisions will then dictate whether you can draw a subdivision line around a natural resource or whether it has to be its own lot. And then does the, um, does a PUD, does the, does the development get essentially credit in terms of like shifting density? The one exception to that, which I probably wasn't very clear in that memo was in the idea of a conservation subdivision. And a conservation subdivision might sort of take the place of that 80% mostly forested property. That's one where the conservation subdivision does influence how much of the natural resources can be impacted. Because the specific goal of that PUD type is to address and acknowledge properties that have a lot of natural resources. So, um, that probably needs a little clarification on my part. So I'll, I'll, I'll try to be a little more clear when we talk about, uh, PUDs and subdivisions in two weeks. Can I just interrupt here to say that at least at my house, we're having a, a big rainfall right now? If this cuts out, if people's power cuts out, let's try again in 10 minutes after it cuts out. And if it's more than 10 minutes, listen to the meeting, okay?
Okay, we did hear that, but you did some flashing.
About the same here.
Yeah, my, my power's flickering.
I see that.
The sky is yellow.
Well, I did just get up and close my windows. Looks like some other people.
Two minutes to close your windows. Please go ahead and do that.
There's once, two minutes.
Okay, we'll take a pause for two minutes here.
Since you're still there Bernie.
I am.
Yeah, I was still, I'm still, um, still have that question about, you know, going through this document in detail. How do we get our comments and input to, uh, to you and Jessica or to Jessica and Paul? By, by annotating it or, you know?
Yeah, I had a few questions. I mean, if it was, if it was, you know, well, my recommendation would be that maybe we have a, you know, just a working markup somewhere that's unofficial that people can just, you know, red line, strike out, add comment, whatever.
Does that have to be a public document?
Well, that's my, that's why I was kind of waiting for Jessica to come back. I, I would think that, I, I don't know. I mean, there must be some way that we can collaborate on comments that, you know, I mean, before the pandemic, you know, um, you know, people sent their comments individually to the rest of the commission. You know, I know Monica, you've sent comments and Michael has, and I think everybody has to one extent or another. So, um, I don't know Jess, we were just talking about the best way for people to provide comments. And the question was whether it has to be a public document or not. I mean, my thought would be, you know, to do some kind of, you know, just a, a shared document that people could redline and comment on that we could all just kind of look at. But I don't know if that has to be public or not.
Yeah, Bernie, that gets into some really tricky open meeting law because you're, you're essentially having an extended meeting if that's the case.
Yeah.
I can provide a document to anyone, including, uh, Michael, you'd, you'd asked earlier if folks would like a version where you can mark it up and then share, share your thoughts back to me. And then I can either put them together or send them all out to everybody. But unfortunately, we can't do a collaborative document because that becomes essentially a meeting without a meeting time or place.
I, I think what you suggested, at least my opinion, that would be fine if people individually marked something up and then you provided a, a compiled version. Because I, I, I think, you know, what some people are struggling with is, is what's 20,000 foot level and what's 20 foot level? And, you know, it maybe if we had a compiled document with comments, then we would have the ability to kind of, you know, get a, a green highlighter for the 20,000 foot stuff and a yellow highlighter for the 20 foot stuff and kind of go through it that way. And, and it might help to move things along. I think in general, you know, the comment that was made on, on kind of throwing out the chapter 12, you know, we've got a lot of good stuff in there and we, and we regulate more than just forest blocks. And so, you know, one comment that I would have is, um, kind of what's good? And can we agree on what's good? And then what do we think needs to be tweaked? And, you know, things like, um, you know, stream corridors and buffers and things like that. Some of it we already regulate, but some of it we don't, but it's pretty straightforward. Maybe those things, you know, slopes, maybe one, maybe not the, the, um, the percentage, but slopes in general. You know, it seems like we could agree on, um, I don't know, what's good and what we want to keep and what requires a little bit more tweaking. And maybe the way to do that is with a compiled document that separates out the, you know, the 20,000 foot from the 20 foot stuff. Opens a suggestion. Raining now.
A lot of tweaking would be, you know, on a document like that, that we could send to Paul or his compilation. I read to you all earlier about some views about where, where we might go. So those are some of the, some of those tweaks might be what I would put into a document.
So I'm more than happy to, oh, I guess, uh, I guess we know who lives east of whom now.
My wife just ordered me to close the windows. I'll be right back.
I think Bernie is the one who lives the furthest east of everybody in this group. So that's why he got it after everybody else jumped up about a minute earlier.
I don't know. Yeah. Okay. Well, that sounds like a great plan. So we, we addressed Michael's original question and some of Monica's. I mean, we're clearly going to have to come back to this at a future meeting. And per Duncan's suggestion, it seems like it makes sense to have our next meeting, look at the PUD work so that we kind of have that in our heads as well before we would maybe make some additional decisions on, on this part. Cause they are really intertwined and, um, you know, I, I think it doesn't make sense to make a final decision on this till we see that and how it fits together.
Okay, so.
Well, particularly the conservation PUD because that is what ties in some of the natural resource stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Agreed.
We'll make sure to hit on that closely at, at your next meeting so that we've got that in a, in a place where you can give as much feedback as you need to on that.
I think it might, Duncan, go ahead.
Just quick question, Paul, were you gonna, per, per what Bernie mentioned, are you? Next, um, were you gonna send out, um, the document to us before our next meeting with the intention that we would get back to you by the next meeting with comments? Or should we wait till after the PUD part to? Wonder what the timing on, on that.
I think it might, I was gonna say earlier, but I think that based on what you're saying in terms of the importance of understanding how the PUDs relate to this, that maybe I'm happy to send it out to you tomorrow as a, as a Word document for the natural resources. And maybe you can start to make your notes on it. But why don't we give folks a few days after the discussion of subdivisions and PUDs in two weeks? So that if something, um, comes from there, that you can link it back. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Does, uh, is it, if, if your meeting's on the 25th, uh, you're, you're the next one on, on subdivisions and PUDs, would a, would the end of the weekend after that be a sufficient time? For folks to provide any, any, anything in writing and that would give me a chance to compile it and get it back to you quickly.
Yeah. And you know, Paul, I'm happy to go look for this as well, but I just want to say again, we spent a lot of time and all of us, you know, voted, raise a hands, all this on the other, a lot of other aspects, the other parts of this. I mean, we spent a lot of time and we were basically in terms of percentages of this and all of that, we were very close. So it might be helpful also finding our meeting minutes, which I can try to go back and find as well. So we can remember the kind of conversations we did have because everything outside of the Arrowood Report, which we were forever waiting on was, we did have a lot of back and forth in that. I know we have Paul Engels now, who will want to have a new, a fresh perspective, which is completely fair. But just a reminder, we, we all did spend a lot of time on that and felt it was almost ready to go to the next level, as I recall.
Uh, I'm happy to put that into a quick summary for everyone. I think you're largely right. There were, there's, there were a few, uh, hanging chats for probably a, that's probably a dated term now, but there were, there were a handful of areas like what are the percentages of steep slopes to be decided on? But I think you're generally right. I think part of the purpose of this meeting was to make sure that this is maybe the first time that you're seeing it all together. And so does all together suggest that it's too little, too much? That's why I want to make sure that it wasn't restricted conversation here because I think it is the first time that you're actually seeing all the pieces together, together. But yes, I'm happy to summarize that. Um, it's, it's pretty short summary in there.
Okay. So I did say that I was gonna make sure that we could take some public comment. I know Roseanne had her hand up earlier and I missed it. So, um, I don't know if anyone did have something on this. You know, we are definitely going to be back to the conversation in a few weeks as well. So you would be able to provide additional written comment before then, um, as an alternative. Not seeing anything from the public, any other commissioner items or things that would be really helpful to see for our next discussion?
Just so you know, Jessica, it looks like a few people's have kind of freeze up. So we've lost Duncan, Frank, Michael, whoops.
Everybody.
Monica, Roseanne. So let's give people a minute here.
I'm a little worried he's out on his bike. Hope he's fine.
Paul, I think you're, you're winning the award so far, knock wood for, uh, for being in the area with the, the, the best power. And I'm assuming that Ted's got some kind of a generator just to make sure.
We just got a lightning bolt here that was incredible.
Yeah.
It sounded like it was right outside the house.
I've had some flickering, but it is still on.
This must be the storm that was in the Midwest yesterday that did so much damage must be here now.
I, I missed that it was coming at all. So I'm, I was debating between staying in the office and biking home or coming home before. I'm glad I, I'm glad I came home first.
Yeah. Here they come. I wasn't able to see Bernie before.
Oh. I had six. You might have to swipe Paul when it gets to be more than a certain number.
Okay. I could see six, but not seven.
All right. It looks like maybe Bernie's coming back here.
I see Bernie, yeah.
Hey Bernie.
Oh, I'm back.
We got Monica back.
My Wi-Fi kicked out and I rebooted it. So I was, I was just trying to call Jessica to say that I was trying to get back. I'm on, but probably it'd be good for everybody to mute again until everybody's on. Paul, are you on? Engels?
I'm on.
Paul Engels, yes, I am.
Can, can you move mute Paul?
I will, yep.
Paul Connor, are you there?
Yes, I sure am.
Okay, good. Yeah. I'm, I'm back. Okay, good. Yeah. I'm, I'm back.
It looks like a lot of people had dropped out. Um, I kicked anybody off who was, um, it looked like their system was hung up. So let's give people a couple of minutes here that were Duncan was one of them. I saw Roseanne was in that boat. Um, a couple of members, a couple of other members of the audience.
Yeah, my, my Wi-Fi went bonkers and I had to reboot my Wi-Fi.
Michael Mitak hasn't come back.
Yeah, I'm back.
Oh, you are? Okay.
That was fun.
Mother Nature says pass chapter 12, I think.
Actually, Paul, so where we were headed was a markup. One thing that would be useful to have to review as well is what Monica asked for, which was the map with what we currently regulate as well as I'd like to see broken down, um, the primary and secondary, um, what we would intend to regulate and see where that gets us.
Okay. Um, we can, yes, we can do that.
Yeah, I, I guess where I'm headed on that is back to kind of the comments that we've gotten and, you know, kind of what, what are we going to end up being able to develop? And, you know, and then ultimately as we start to get down into the weeds, can we allow higher density in those places that we're going to develop? And to what extent to kind of mitigate, you know, so like we carve out a a forest core, for example, and it's a certain percent of the property and we say you can't develop there. You know, can we allow, you know, higher density on the rest so that, you know, it maintains its, its market value and its ability to, you know, provide housing at a higher density. But I think that, you know, being able to look at everybody's comments and a map of, you know, kind of what we're actually chewing into would be useful.
Sure. And I think that's, that's a big part of your next discussion is how do you want to construct the development side of, uh, of the table here? Um, there's a, and I don't want to get into too much of it tonight, but there's a couple of different approaches to how you can, how you can come at the housing and development side to create the neighborhoods that you want. And then where they, the two intermixes, what happens when there's a significant amount of natural resources on a property that you would want to, uh, help offset or compensate for, or allow some construction within, in a balanced form?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm really cognizant and worried about several different things. One is make sure that we have a good housing stock, a good affordable housing stock. But also we have to remember that these properties are assets to the people that own them. And so when we, um, regulate something, you know, it potentially negatively affects that asset. And so I think there needs to be a way to.
Looks like Bernie froze up mid-sentence.
Okay. We'll work on that for you.
Oh, now we're back. Are we back?
We, we are. You froze up for a second, but I, I think we might've gotten your whole point.
Okay.
Um, Bernie, I'm going to turn your camera off because it looks like you're struggling a little bit with that. It'll help with bandwidth.
I organize. So it says you, you closed my webcam, Paul.
Oh, yes, it got stuck.
Oh, okay. Let me reshare it.
Yeah.
Because I, right now I've just got a, a planning commission slot waiting for SB, SB screen. Is what I've got.
We can hear you, Bernie.
Oh, there we go. Everybody's back. A different group, but.
So we have the seven commissioners are all on, all the video looks like it's working.
Yeah, I got knocked off there for a little while.
Yeah, no, we, we did a pause. Um.
Okay. So, um, my takeaway here, and, and I think you were just about to open it up for public comment, Jessica, was um, I'm going to send out, uh, a, um, Word version of Article 12. Going to put together some mapping, uh, to show the specifically the areas that the habitat blocks and connectors um, cover that are not, um, already, uh, regulated. What portion of that are, um, our core areas? And then for your next meeting where you talk about the development side, help, uh, highlight the relationship, um, between, um, conservation, um, objectives and development and how does something like a conservation PUD play into this? And, you know, how do we construct the development side of it? So there's going to be a lot to cover in your next meeting, but I think we can do a lot of it.
Yeah. So I think there'll also be some, uh, reading ahead of next meeting. So we shall try to reserve some time to really go through those materials ahead. But we're all rested up now, so we're ready.
And as I said, I'm, I'm going to try to get your packets out to you on Wednesdays of the, the week before to give you an extra couple of days.
Yeah.
In the public.
Um, so right as the storm was really picking up, um, I was asking if anyone from the public had any additional comments on the chapter 12 discussion we were just having. You could speak up now or, um, we, written comment is also fine. We will be kind of compiling written things before the next time we talk about the chapter 12 items as well.
Bill Shearer, I think that your mic is live. Is there a comment that you want to be sharing now?
Are you on our subject of increased coverage?
We are gonna.
Not just yet. That's next.
So I'm waiting.
Great. Well.
I'm just gonna, Bill, I just muted you because you had some background noise, but when it's your item, we'll be happy to open it back up.
Okay. So any, any last items on this number five, the chapter 12 discussion?
This is Roseanne. Uh, my internet went down. I'm on the phone. I don't know if you can hear me. I can't obviously see any of you.
We can hear you, Roseanne. Thank you. Go ahead.
Now the time for the high level comments on the, uh, okay.
Go ahead.
All right. So thank you. Uh, I, I did read, um, Article 12, uh, in detail, and I think it's um, very good job, by the way. Uh, I'm very pleased with, with much of it. But here are my just big, big, high level. It seemed like you were getting into the weeds, but so, um, it, the, the chapter is titled environmental protection standards. Yet most of the, the, uh, chapter, I know it was once a water, uh, the chapter on, uh, water. But most of it is really focused primarily on, um, a few, uh, of the environmental natural resources we have. But it doesn't cover all of the environmental resources. And that's what I would urge. If this is to be an environmental protection standard, it should cover all of the environment. Um, you know, such as, you know, uh, fields, meadows, um, uh, soil, et cetera, not, not. I mean, I think it's wonderful. You're addressing the, uh, habitats and the connectivity, uh, and the waterways, but there is lots of, uh, lots. I mean, there are other environmental, um, resources that need to be protected and I would encourage you to make this an encompassing article. Um, uh, and I think the, the 25 parcels that were evaluated or, um, by the ID Open Space Committee, we're looking at other natural resources. And I think, um, that's would be a indication of that. The other thing is that as going through it, it appears as if, uh, you're giving the DRB, uh, a lot to do. And, um, in, in, uh, many of the paragraphs, it talks about the DRB makes the decision. That would then leave it to a subjective decision based on who's on the DRB at the time. But it also, um, can cause more controversy. I think Monica or someone else mentioned that, you know, when you don't have set standards, then you get the back and forth because it's ambiguous. So I would urge you to set the standards, uh, allow the DRB to enforce them, but not, um, make, let them be the decider. And it seemed in a few paragraphs, that's exactly what was, uh, happening. The other thing you mentioned early on, which I think was wonderful, is that this is supposed to be understandable, written in clear language. So the lay um, individual can understand it. Uh, I think it goes a long way, but I think some of the key phrases you use, um, are, are confusing and contradictory. I know maybe in planning circles, the word hazard has another meaning. Uh, but the definition of hazard is, you know, source of danger, uh, or risk. And so the public is generally thinking that when you talk about hazard areas. The other thing is level one and level two are pretty meaningless unless they're defined as level one means whatever, level two means whatever. Right now they're just numbers. So, um, uh, that. And the last thing is, um, I would encourage you, and, and I am a member of the, the South Bronx and Land Trust, but I would encourage you to, uh, have the land trust, um, people work with you on this, just like the developers worked with you all on the LDRs having to do with inclusionary zoning. Um, I, and I know they wrote, uh, many of the, um, the words that went into the LDRs that were approved. So this is an environmental, uh, chapter. Uh, I caution you not to get off into development. There's plenty of, um, the rest of the LDRs are all about the, the chapters are all about development. This chapter is about the environment. There's very little left to save and I really urge the commissioners to focus on protecting and preserving the environment in this one chapter out of very many. So thank you very much for listening.
Yeah, thank you, Roseanne. That was a lot of, um, really well thought out comments. Great. Anyone at Monica? Go ahead.
We just asked the, um, National Resource Committee to officially give us comments on this, maybe by the due date that we're all putting comments in as well.
Um, Monica, I can send it over to them. The, the Natural Resources Committee was, um, largely turned over last month. Um, I think all but one or two members, um, had for one reason or another left previously. So they have not actually met yet because committees are not, are not meeting. So as a group, they, they haven't even met each other yet, but, um, I'm happy to send it to them as people, as individuals, um, to get their feedback. We're just sort of in that, that's just where we're at right now.
Yeah, that makes sense. And with the land trust not being like a city committee, uh, maybe it, because of that though, um, would it be fair to reach out to them as well and ask for comment by a certain date? Or, I mean, Roseanne, she just heard it. So she could pass it along to them as well and officially.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
I would extend that statement to anybody who'd like to provide feedback on it. Uh, that's part of why we made sure to deliver it a couple of months ago so that people had a chance to read it. I'd encourage everybody who's on this and anybody who would like to chat, if they've got things that they have concerns about, please share them with me and I will happily share them with you.
Yeah, I, I would just comment that, um, that I kind of view this as a working document at this point. And, you know, as we've just mentioned, the, you know, the commission is going to be providing comments back for all of us to kind of chew on. So in my mind, it's, it's not ready for prime time. And, you know, certainly, you know, people are welcome to comment at any point. But you know, I, I worry about people commenting on something that, that, you know, we may end up, you know, changing on our own anyway. So, um, you know, I, I guess, you know, my own personal preference would be to kind of get all of our comments put together and, and go through, you know, our 20,000 foot stuff. And kind of at least agree as a commission that we're kind of headed in the right direction. And maybe at, at that point, you know, getting comments on something that, you know, people can sink their teeth into would be more productive, but that's just one person's point of view.
I guess I have, I encourage anyone to give comments anywhere along the way. And, you know, if we feel like we're not settled, then maybe we can add to the discussion. Um, you know, I wouldn't want anyone to think we don't want comments. So, um, but, you know, just back to the original idea is that, you know, we, we might get to a point where we feel generally good about the direction we're heading with everything and really want to get the city council's feedback. You know, that was my original dis- suggestion. Um, you know, we might not need to nail down every single little thing, but if we're feeling pretty good, um, you know, it might be helpful to get their feedback and also to help inform them of the direction we're going so they can move forward on some of the other things they're working on that kind of complement, um, this work. So um, with that, I think we might be ready to move on to, um, the next item on the agenda, which, um, is the proposed amendment to allow increased lot coverage within the urban design overlay district. And, and this was something that was brought to us, um, originally by Bill Shearer, um, who I do see is on the call. A very long time ago in 2013, which I completely apologize for. And, um, again, more recently. So what we have in front of us here, um, was kind of a collaborative effort between Ted, Michael and Bernie, um, and staff. So thank you very much for that. And um, we do have a nice memo. I don't know if one of you want to say a few words about how you got here. I do, I do think we want to make sure to hear from Bill as well. So I don't know if Bernie or, or one of you wanted to say anything about kind of what is in front of us today.
Quick, quick question, Paul. I can't remember. Did I send you my annotated copy of, of this proposal?
I, I believe you sent me a copy, Michael, a couple of days after we met. And I thought that I had incorporated your questions into the draft. Um, but I will, I can go back and verify. I, I do recall your sending it and one of your questions was percentages and I left that open. And I think you raised a couple of other things that I thought I had integrated into this draft.
Yeah, and I'll just go based on memory because we did that kind of a long time ago too. But, um, you know, we had originally talked about this back in one of our meetings, um, you know, pre-pandemic. And I think what we ended up with is largely, um, the direction we were headed in, um, when we met as a commission. And I think when, uh, Michael and Ted and I talked, we felt that, um, exchanging a little bit of additional lot coverage for some kind of mini part was, um, appropriate and in line with what we had, uh, talked about and kind of, um, kicked around when we had met way back in person. And so that's how we came up with the language that's, um, proposed. Mad on that, Ted or Michael?
Like Ted?
Yeah. And again, you know, it's along basically Shelburne Road and Williston Road corridor because the idea was we're not doing spot zoning. So we looked at sort of a larger picture and realized that we could be a little creative in those areas where there could be, you know, slightly more density. But then these little snippets or pocket parks or little public spaces that could, uh, you know, be available for pedestrians. And I guess the one issue I do have, Paul, one question I have is in these snippets, you know, you walk along, let's say Williston Road, let's say it's, uh, you know, a, a building that may go in where uh, the motel is there with Ethan Allen, just Ethan, or Ethan Allen motel, is that what it's called or? I don't know, some, whatever it is. But if there's a little snippet park in between a building or two, how do we make sure that the public knows that that's public access? And that's the same case along Shelburne Road as well. If we have these little infills and these little pocket parks, what, what, you, you know, would, would we require some kind of sidewalk that goes from the sidewalk to this park? I mean, because sometimes you can, you see these little, the chairs, but you don't know if it's really for the public or for the building or for the employees.
Right. Well, I mean, I guess that that's a question for you. Um, the design of it is that it must be adjacent to a street right-of-way and have a direct access either to the street right-of-way or to a building.
Right.
Um, we did not specify whether it must be open to the public or not. That is uh that there there has been some work on that um uh on that around the country. They're called privately owned public spaces, um POPs, I think is is for for short. We didn't specify that here, that it must be open to the public, but it is uh physically located in a place that would be adjacent to uh a street. And so it would.
And in fact, a couple of the options we talked about for this particular property um were kind of mini parks that were um accessible for employees. You know, there was one that was kind of that we looked at that, you know, we thought might be um something employees could use. So I I think when we talked about it, we 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 definitely didn't, at least in my memory, was say that it had to be um public access. I think.
Right. It has to be adjacent to the street, but it could be designed to meet the needs of a variety of different groups as a physical design. That's that's how it's drafted there.
Yep.
Okay. My my thought was that not open to the public, but accessible, which we're confronting on a public street, which makes it accessible if it's open.
Quick question on um, Paul, I don't know if you can answer this. On liability, is it a liability? I mean, if it's a park, is it a liability for the property owner to open it to the public? Is there any liability that oh that opens them up to?
Um, I'd have to look into that question. I'm not sure. It's not technically a park. Um, it's it's a it's a private gathering space, and we know that those exist all over the place today. You know, the Barnes and Noble has a little one, and uh, you know, I can think of probably a dozen properties around, but if you'd like, I'm happy to look into that question.
I just didn't know if that was would be an impediment to the business owners if they if they found that out. I don't know.
I have a comment. Um, I remember when we had gone through this, discussed this before, and I think it's a great idea. I just wanted to point out that the TDR recommendation made during interim zoning looked for ways to um enrich the the marketing, the, you know, the opportunities for TDR sales. And to me, this seems like the kind of example, I don't know if it can be because I know there's specific rules, would purchasing TDRs be an option rather than going this route? And I I just.
Well, I was just going to say, Monica, I think these are so small, you know, a TDR wouldn't really apply to it. But again, just my opinion.
Well, the cost per TDR is not necessarily huge, and there's somebody out there who may be looking to one, at least as an option. I'm just reminding us that during interim zoning, you know, we did, and and the last time we discussed this, the that committee's findings weren't put forth yet, so that's why I raise it.
I guess what I would suggest, Monica, is there's nothing precluding the planning commission from adding that or adjusting in the future to create that opportunity. The council asked the commission to take up this in the short term, and so this, you know, understanding that TDRs is a complex subject and it's absolutely a priority, but it can't be done in one meeting. Um, that's that's, I think, why we've looked at options that weren't TDR-based for the short term.
Yeah, uh, exactly, Paul. We we did mention it, but uh since uh Bill Shearer has waited seven years for this, uh and there's no TDR ordinance that would cover this right now, we decided to uh not not to consider TDRs in this case.
So I guess the the question of public versus not public, um I was looking back at our um form-based code open space types, of which these are a few. They're not all open to the public. Some of them are for the, you know, the people who work or live there, right, Paul? I mean, I'm not misspeaking on that.
Um, in this instance, the two options that are available are pocket mini park and snippet parklet. And in both cases, it says uh intended to primarily serve public or residents is what the pocket mini park says, and the other one says may serve general public, employees, residents, or customers. So it's it's sort of a design feature more than anything. I think as uh as as Bernie had described, I think it was Bernie had described, or maybe it was Michael, I'm sorry, um that it's 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 the location and the design, but not necessarily an allowance or a restriction at this point for who can physically be there. And certainly, we're not going to be policing that.
And and if the land ever is uh if the pro- if the owner ever sells their property and it becomes used for a different purpose, is that pocket park flagged as, does it run with the land or?
It's part of their site plan approval, Monica, is the way it would be done. So um just like you got an approval for 26 parking spaces or that this is where your dumpster is located, um anybody who chose to change that or to apply to change, you would have to uh submit an application, and they would have to be consistent with the rules. So if they decided that they were getting rid of that 10% impervious, then conceivably they could also choose to remove that because that that would no longer be the restriction. Or if the zoning changed at some point, then they would have the ability to apply, but they can't do it. Zoning applies to the property, not the property owner.
Bill, did you, I saw you turned your mic back on. Did you want to speak on this?
Yeah, I applaud you adding the Williston Road areas. I don't really know those properties very well, but I think it's good to add more properties to it. We talked about pocket parks, pocket parks three or four years ago, and we kind of, my impression is we kind of threw it in the trash because I couldn't find a good place for a pocket park down here. I don't think it would ever get used. I think it's a waste of money. In our Audi showroom, we have four chairs for people waiting. It's it's not a part of the business plan with Audi. We have a a brand-new Audi owner car for anybody that's in for service, so they don't want people waiting. Our technicians eat lunch in an air-conditioned uh social-distanced um lunchroom, and they usually spend 20 minutes to 30 minutes in there. I don't think it's uh appropriate for this lot. We have traffic on three sides. We have Shelburne Road and tractor-trailer trucks. Who wants to sit by a highway like that? So then you put it in the back of a parking lot, you're introducing more safety issues. I can't find a site for it. I'd like to see our proposal without the pocket parks be what you regulate, and then I can spend the money and make a donation to the South Burlington Library, and everybody uses that. I don't want to build a pocket park that no one ever uses.
I'm sorry. So I'm going to come back to the TDR comment. I don't know how far away we are from some of this, but that seems like it could be a very simple solution, and it may be, I I don't, I I don't understand the, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar, Bill, with the with um, I I know that we've heard from you before. I'm not um familiar with the earth uh today's timing needs, so forgive for that, but I am just thinking, just wanted to raise that again. It seems to me like buying a TDR for the square footage or whatever the calculation would be, would be a quick, simple fix that.
Somebody would come up with it. I I'd sign up for that, you know? I mean, right now, the urgency of this is less because business is down, and our pavement is in a lot of ways more vacant, and it's a tough business environment. As a businessman, you can't throw away $20,000 on a park. No one's going to sit in. So it's wasteful. So maybe this works in another environment, but Stephanie and I and Paul went all around our site, and, you know, we'd be in a shadow over here and too close to the road over there, and it doesn't work. I don't know why it came back.
Paul, when when Michael and Ted and I talked, we had a um a Google satellite view of the property, and there were two specific areas that were identified. And those same two specific areas were the areas that were identified when we last met as a planning commission and Bill was present. So um I guess I'm a little confused by um not knowing what those places are. So um so I have two two questions. One is, do we have that map that we can look at? And two is, um, you know, I understand what Bill is saying. Can we add language um that says in Louisville Park that you can you can um donate X to a, you know, a park fund?
What a public inquiry as he suggested.
Well, so I I'll bring up the map in a second. Um, there is the possibility to do it towards a park fund, but you have a legal nexus test that you need to be able to pass, which is that there's a relationship between what you're granting and um what what's being what's being done. And so uh the challenge that we had in the Shelburne Road area is there is no nearby park that people could benefit from, and a library is probably not related to the subject area sufficiently. Um, a TDR could potentially be a possibility, um but we had looked to see if there was a park nearby that could be that could be an option, and and that sort of proved a little bit tricky. There's um, you know, I I applaud the creativity. The challenge is that there've been some federal Supreme Court decisions that have struck those things down, and while Bill uh may be very willing, the next property owner may not.
Yeah, and the contribution would just would be an option in lieu of doing the actual park.
I can take a look at the question. I'll, I can talk with our city attorney about it tomorrow.
Yeah, and I know we talked about nee- it needing to be um, you know, if you're contributing, it needed to be kind of in the area. But, you know, I I guess, you know, how would you define what the area, you know, how far can you go to, you know, to be within the area? So um, anyway, I I don't know. I I hear what Bill is saying, though, and that's the, you know, spending money for something that people aren't going to use. If if you have the option to contribute, um, you know, at least worth exploring. But I I would like to pull up that map because we did, like I said, when we met as a full commission way back in when the world was a normal place, um, we did look at two specific places, and those specific places were the same places that Michael and Ted and I looked at when we considered putting this language together.
One part was on the north northeast corner, just behind Acura.
Right.
And the other, the other piece was on Holmes, uh, on the south side of of the showroom.
So the first area, there's a bunch of utility um stays that hold the poles up and utility easements. It's kind of an awkward spot. It's very shady. Uh, the the building blocks out the sun, so it's it might not a pleasant spot. The second spot is a snow removal area where there's to get the snow off that end of the lot collects right in that area.
I mean, what I what I'm hearing is that unfortunately, the pandemic makes this a less urgent decision that has to be made, if I'm, I hope I'm, that's correct. And we're in interim zoning with this with, I know that city council asked us to look at this, but it sounds to me like the thing that's being discussed in interim zoning may be the better solution for Bill, but also for, especially for extending this onto Williston Road, there might be a lot of opportunities like this, and it's exactly the kind of thing that that committee was looking for. So if 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 it's less urgent today due to un- unfortunate circumstance, I would ask that we recommend to city council that they um consider looking at the TDR recommendation and and consider this um a potential use.
Just to be clear, like, um, maybe it would be the language as written, so you could do a park or you could buy a TDR, something like that.
Yeah, or you could contribute to, you know, a park fund if it's applicable.
And then if if later the TDR is decided that the TDR resolution is more important to the greater per good of the city, uh it it may change later to be TDR-specific. I mean, that that's trying to solve a problem citywide, and the TDRs may, we may have more TDRs that we're adding to the bank soon. So making all kinds of other options, to me, will leave us in a place that we're trying to get out of right now. So I know we can't solve it tonight. I'm just putting that out there.
Well, I go back to, you know, what what TDRs are, and I may completely misunderstand them, but, you know, to me, you know, the purpose of a TDR is to transfer the ability to develop one place to another place. And when you're de- when you're talking about areas that are this small, um, I just question the applicability of it. You know, it's, you know, you're buying such a small thing that realistically, you're not going to be able to transfer, you know, any apprecial development somewhere else. Whereas if you're, you know, if you're con- contributing to a park fund, you know, maybe that's a little bit of a difference because, you know, the money can be used to enhance an existing park um as well as as work on a new one. But, you know, again, that may be due to my lack of understanding on TDRs, which I'll.
I don't disagree. I think the park fund is an excellent option option, but the number that Bill was just mentioning happens to be equal to, if not greater than, a TDR. And that's just one parcel, and that is extending, that is um expanding square footage, which is allowable under TDR uh usage, I believe, to expand, to go for a bigger a bigger footprint, if you will. That's that's part of what a TDR is allowed to do. I know it's not replacing a house, but but we're looking to help short-term resolve that problem, so.
And I and I don't have any problem having a TDR, you know, sentence in there, um, you know, so, you know, to have the language be, you know, build a mini park, uh contribute, you know, the appropriate TDR value or contribute to a park fund and have that be the language. I I do think, though, that that, you know, Bill's kind of, you know, he's been left hanging for quite some time, and, you know, I kind of like to, you know, get a best shot at the language and and keep it rolling. You know, my concern being that, you know, I don't, so languishing, you know, now we're a year from now, and Bill still doesn't know what he can do, and the market has come back, and he needs the space, and, you know, then we're back here a year from now with different commissioners, you know, redoing this. So I guess, you know, I would like to come to, you know, some kind of resolution on the language the best we can and, you know, kind of keep it moving um for Bill's sake and for our sake as well, but.
Why don't you let me expand my lot, and I'll give you seven years to come up with the fee I owe.
With interest?
And then I'll rip up the parking lot if it's not satisfactory.
Yeah, no, I I'm all for.
Can I say the park's fund? I I would lean towards putting it into a park fund.
So um what I'm hearing from folks is that um folks seem to be supportive of what Bill is trying to do on his property, um and it's just finding the right tool that that works for that. Why don't I uh check in with the city attorney this week um about whether the contribution is an option that can work? I'll also touch base with Michael, who's been our point person on TDRs. Um, it may be that one of them becomes eligible immediately and another one gets added in in a few months' time. But I I want to, you know, with all the things on your plate, I don't want you to uh have the the good be the enemy of the great.
How about the proposal that Stephanie wrote, Paul? The proposal that Stephanie wrote for just expanded coverage in these areas, and when you figure out the trade-off fee, put it in later.
I think, and what he, sorry, this is Stephanie here. Um, sorry, I don't have video on because I'm just not sure.
Sorry, I don't have video on because I'm just not sure how long it'll hold out here. But we, and yes, the proposal was specific to, I just want to reiterate, it was very specific to this type of district and this type of use with multiple structures. At one point, we had discussed on multiple street frontages, this particular size lot, because that's what's really creating the constriction. It's the fact that this is a very unique type of use. C1 auto on a site with multiple existing structures. This was before he even bought the property, it had multiple structures and with frontage on two different roads and technically three, although the third is not a public, public road. So, you know, it creates these really unusual circumstances. So that's why we made the proposal that was specific to increasing coverage just for those exceptional standards.
And just for that zone, C1 auto.
Correct.
How would we accomplish that legally, Paul? Easy to do?
Just, oh, go ahead.
You know, it's, I guess what I'd say, Michael, is it's, it's on the borderline. It's on the borderline. The, the feedback that I think that I'd gotten from, from the three of you was that you weren't super excited about the idea of just increasing lot coverage without meeting any other city goal.
You're right. We wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to do something more, more extensive.
I do think, I do want to reiterate what, what Bernie said, though. I think, you know, this is obviously your choice, but one way or the other, having a conclusion on this subject, whether it's a yay or a nay and what, what circumstances, I think it would be good to wrap up.
Is it, can we somehow build into this that Bill Shearer would buy a TDR at, at some future date when the ordinance is complete? Because I know that there are people who have TDRs who want to sell them, but they don't want to sell them to be used in open space. They want to be, they want to sell them to be used in, in other parts of the city. So they are available, but we don't have the legal structure to do it yet.
Regardless of whether we look at what Stephanie wrote or whether we look at kind of what was originally proposed, I mean, it still needs to go through the regulatory change process. So, you know, my own kind of personal opinion is, is that, you know, we should, because, Paul, you're right, and, and either Michael or Ted, you know, we were, we were trying to look for getting an enhancement, something in addition. And so, you know, you know, I would propose going with the language that, you know, we kind of agreed on and move that forward. And, and that would be our existing language or contribution to a fund or a TDR. And, and have that be the language. Let, let Paul check with the attorney to see if there's any constraints on it and, and move that one forward. One man's vote.
I'd second that.
I would agree with Bernie on that.
I'd go along with that. And, and I think Ted's point about his preference for a donation to a park fund is, is a good one. Because they may not suffer from the legal issues that you mentioned, Paul.
Okay, well, let me, let me come back to either, based on what you talked about earlier, I'm not sure I can do it at this immediate coming meeting, but within the next two meetings, come back to you with, with some options there.
Yeah, I, we want to get it, you know, get the language nailed down, get it in front of the attorney and try to get this resolved in an expeditious manner and keep it on our radar and on our agenda to get it done.
Okay, I'm happy to keep Bill and Stephanie in the loop as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that wraps up that item. We do have, I know it's getting really close to nine, which would be nice to wrap up in the next few minutes. So we're not going real late, especially on our first meeting, but we do.
That would be on time, Jessica. We can't do that. Michael wants to go till 10.
Well, I'm also a night owl, but we did miss the time for the thunderstorm there. So I think maybe we can make a little room here to talk about the schedule and the work plan. Paul has a very scary chart that he nicely did not share with us. Paul, you are on.
I'll give you the super simplified version of it because I didn't want to overwhelm everybody in the first meeting back. But you should be seeing my screen now. And there's, should be sort of one page of notes on here.
Yes.
So this is sort of the big picture of what's on your plate currently. I tried to break it down into sort of four categories. You've got everything related to the subdivision, PUD, natural resources, language. For our own purposes, we've kind of broken them out into each component piece so that we can keep track of it. So don't worry about the, like, the number 15, but it's just kind of like subdivisions is one thing and TDRs is a thing and that kind of thing. That's obviously the biggest slug on your plate. Separately from that, you know, we're always checking in with the zoning administrator, with the DRB. And we've got about a dozen sort of totally unrelated amendments that are, that are largely non-controversial and wanting to get your feedback. Doesn't need to be tonight, but in the next couple of meetings of, what do you think about having maybe a small working group? Just kind of look through those and give a recommendation. They're, they're not big things, but, but they're, they're valuable to the, to the DRB. Last fall, we'd had a subcommittee of a form-based code group that Duncan and Ted and Art and Mark Baer from the DRB were on. Some of those got passed and some of those sort of got put onto the side. So there's a few of those remaining to be addressed. There's a handful of subject areas that either predated interim zoning or have, were projects that, that you'd already been working on, like the traffic overlay district that are, you know, relatively close to completion, but they're going to take some work on your behalf. And then a fifth category, which I, you know, I'd be remiss for the meeting to end without recognizing that there's been a couple of pretty major things that have happened in the last five months and acknowledging that the world is a little bit different as a result of the pandemic to the business community around affordable housing, et cetera, and also a lot of the social justice issues that have come up and how, you know, while they may not be the first thing that you do on the first meeting and that you may want to be thinking about how you, either as a group or as, or as a part of a larger, maybe a working group with, with some other leaders in the community would want to take on. So that's kind of the, the big picture of where we're at. We've had the chance to, to draft a fair amount of language, which is good, so we can help be in a position to be prepared to give you the most possible for your meetings. But we will have no shortage of things for you over the next little while. And whenever you're ready, I can give you my list of about 40 items deep, but I didn't want to overwhelm everybody on day one.
But Paul, can you also just give us a sense of where are we with interim zoning? Well, I haven't, I have to be honest, I haven't been following City Council meetings. Is it, is there an end date for it?
It's, currently, the next, the, the council has it in three-month increments. The next three-month increment expires in late September. And then within the original two years, that leaves to mid-November.
And that's the end, right? We can't go anything beyond that for sure. That's.
The state, the state law allows for a re-upping beyond that for one additional time period. The council has not talked about that. So I think the council's been looking at this November as, as their timeline.
By one additional time period, do you mean another three months or another two years?
One more, the state law allows for one additional year. It requires its own public hearing and its own warning, et cetera. I'm not, the council, as I said, has not talked about that at all. But that is, you asked what's legally allowed, that's what's legally allowed. I think my read is that the council's expectation is that as much of this as possible is done by that time, especially things around natural resources. But I think you'll find that the challenging thing is that the natural resources and development are kind of linked into one another, as you talked about earlier tonight.
It's September the 13th is the, is the end of the current period, right?
Right. And then there's another, the, the, there's another, I guess, technically three months, except that because of the pandemic, the council took advantage of, of emergency measures. So whether it's November or December, that's probably for an attorney to figure out. I would expect that probably the council will extend past September under, knowing that you've just had your first meeting tonight. We've been keeping them in the loop on that.
Any, anybody want to have any scheduled discussion, I guess, or response or questions for Paul?
Well, I would be very interested, sorry, I would be very interested in volunteering to work on the last five-month look if you do a subgroup of that.
Great, thanks, Monica. Yeah, so I guess that might be it for now.
I guess I would just leave you with one last thought, which is that once you have the second half of this discussion about the development side, you may want to think about an extra meeting here or there, maybe in September to, to get through this stuff once, while it's fresh in your mind. But that's obviously your decision and we'll support however you want to go about doing any of that.
Okay, we do have some minutes from March 10, which was our last meeting included. It looks like Michael on mute just.
Moved to approve, yes.
Do we have a second? Okay, Ted, you can, great. So any comments or anything? Okay, all in favor of approval? Aye?
Aye.
That looked like unanimous. Anyone abstain or? Okay, great. Well, then, we're only a little late. And thank you all for a very good, productive meeting and welcome back.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Wonderful to see everyone. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, Jessica.